All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today's date is September the 10th, 2024, and this is a kind of a budget workshop for the Telsi City Common Council. There is no agenda really to approve. There is no minutes to approve. There's just a workshop, so we won't be making any motions necessarily except for adjournment later. Where do we want to start, council? Or Connie?
Last week, the mayor did review quite a few of the budgets last week as the department heads were here, so I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of the budgets, if you have looked through them at all. Currently in the general budget, the total general budget budgeted for proposed for next year is $5,612,379, and that would give me an operating balance of $109,000, which isn't a whole lot, but it's some. And then, oh, the current, the budget proposed is $5,612,379. And that would give us a property tax rate of 1.4755, which you must always remember, on our net assessed value, we use a lower 85% of the current one, so this rate is higher than what it'll actually be because they will use the actual net AV once that is certified to the state.
You brought the wrong book.
I brought the one to the working book, not the...
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm sorry, what was your...
Balance of the operating fund.
The operating balance, if this budget is approved this way, is $109,088.
At the end of '25, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
What, do we still have, is that the unappropriated?
No, that is not the unappropriated. That would be what my cash balance is at the end of next year if we spend everything out of the budget, next year.
If both seats are as projected and if those pencils are projected, that's all we know.
Right, right. So you hope everybody doesn't pay everything out of their budgets each year, and you hope your income comes in better than what you thought it would.
If memory serves me, last year when we did this, we had projected an operating balance of $140,000.
Something like that, yes. I apologize. I knew I'd forget to bring something up with me, and I didn't bring last year's stuff up with me, so... But the rate is comparable to what it was last year when we had this session last year. So, you know, if there are things like within the general budget that you would like to see changed or anything, what I would suggest is if you cut something one place, you put it somewhere else within the general budget. That way, we're going to stay close, you know, stay at that $5,612.
The only thing, I've been through these a couple of times, and the only thing I would like to talk about, and I would like to wait until America arrives, I'd like to talk about the animal shelter. But I want to save that discussion until he's here.
Till he come, yes, that's, that's fine.
I don't want to have to repeat myself?
Right, that's, I understand, yes. Did anybody have any questions on any of the budgets, not just the general budget, any of the others that are, that are in your budget book that you do have to approve?
You talking about departments or overall?
Well, any of the budgets, our departments, or, you know, like the riverboat.
We haven't went through those.
No. Do you want to start after the general budget? Because we didn't go through those last week. I do agree with you on that. I stopped.
You know my concern on the pay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm back.
You're back, okay. Well, I've, we've, the...
You get it all through while I'm gone?
Yes.
Good.
Councilman Cleeman would like to discuss the animal shelter.
Do you want to start with that first?
And he...
Unless somebody else has something.
Well, might as well, I mean, it's not going to hurt anything, because you, you, council, do you all have a copy of the stuff from last week that Molly gave you guys?
And if you're looking in your budget book, it is, the current budget is on page 25, and next year's proposed budget is on page 26.
Yeah, and we've, we've proposed...
Oh, I got too much stuff here.
Will you take it out of your pocket?
I'm fixing to put something over there.
Last year, we gave $35,000. This year, she's requesting, or they're requesting 50. We did talk to the county. They requested 50 from them as well, and what was...
They have, they have put it in their budget, but their council has not met yet to know what they're going to do, if they're going to be able to allow that or not.
How much do they offer?
Both, Telsi 50 and the county 50 is what Molly proposed to both entities. They did put it in their budget, but they have not met yet to say, yes, we're going to do 50 or whatever. So I'm going to let Larry kind of, well, just start with this one. It's an easy one to kind of go over for the most part, I mean...
Okay. I, I mean, I've got, I've got mixed feelings about the animal shelter. I mean, it's, it is supposed to be a county responsibility to begin with. However, having said that, I don't see how they can operate without our support, so we need to deal with the facts as they exist. I, first of all, she, she gave us some expenses, but nowhere have I seen, and I don't know, Connie, have you received any information on their income?
No, I have not. All I have got is what she presented you all at the meeting last week, and that's attached with my notes. I didn't even bring it up.
I know they've had a lot of fundraisers, but I think at the very least, we need to have, have some type of income report. I'd like to know what kind of financial condition...
I made a note. I'll request, I'll get an email her this week.
Okay.
I mean, you're right, Larry. They get, my, my mother-in-law, when she passed away, she donated to the shelter. I mean, they're getting revenue through that, too.
Well, and...
Which is, you know, okay, or not concerned.
But they're also showing that they've got a raise, they've got a $24,000 deficit. Even, even if we increase our support, and the county increases its support to $50,000 a year, so, well, there's no doubt in my mind, they need, the expenses are a little different, okay? I had a discussion with the police department to find out what their thoughts were on the shelter and what we would do if there was no shelter. The comments that were made to me is the, the police department is satisfied with the service that they're providing. The only issue that they've had, which they would have even, they would have more of without a shelter, is that when the shelter's closed and the police have to pick up a dog, you know, so they get a complaint and have to pick up a dog, they, there is a kennel outside the animal shelter, and my understanding is that Molly, the director, has given the police the code for that lock, and the police are able to take the dog up there, put it in the kennel, and leave it in that outside kennel. And then they, they get a hold, or try to get a hold of Molly, or Ann, or somebody to let them know that there's a dog in that kennel. And I think, according to Chief Loudon, there's been a couple of times they've had a little bit of a communication issue, but, you know, it's, it's, it's really not the animal shelter's responsibility to operate 24/7. They don't, they don't get paid for that, you know, they're providing that service, but...
Sure.
So anyway, but all in all, they're satisfied with the service, and, and it would be a detriment if that shelter didn't exist. Having said that, I looked through, I mean, if we want, if, if we want to increase to 50 grand, we got to come up with $15,000 somewhere. So I looked through the budgets, and a couple of places that I thought about, on page 14...
And I don't know what your suggestions are going to be, but also, it could be that put into a different fund also.
Riverboat.
Riverboat, Q cap, we could, you know, possibly work that, so...
I'm going to make that suggestion.
Okay, okay, sorry.
We're just trying to take your thunder, that's all.
Yes.
Well, that, that, that's fine, there.
Okay, but what did you say, page 14? Is that what you said?
Page 14, yeah.
Okay.
You know, I was looking, because it currently is budgeted in the general fund, so I was looking at general fund items.
Yes.
And if you look on this, toward the bottom of the page, construction curbs and walks, we've got 50,000 budgeted. Now, I know we never have enough on sidewalks and stuff, but that's an optional item. I mean, we could, we could reduce that, okay? I'm not saying I'm recommending that, but that's a possible area that we, we could reduce. Back on page 50. I think we're getting into riverboat there.
Yes.
Sorry.
Actually, the proposed budget is on page 51 for that.
You're correct, thank you. Again, I don't know how much riverboat revenue we get, but if we wanted to, I mean, we've got, I don't want to get in a fight with anybody, and I'm not seeing these aren't legitimate budget items. However, if we're balancing things out, in my mind, the animal shelter is more important than the Regional Arts, the Telsi Strong, and the Telsi Historical Society. I'm just saying, in my mind, the animal shelter is more important. The other thing that we've got budgeted under riverboat is 20,000 as part of the fountain project, as only part of it. We've got 75,000 in the park and rec budget, I believe.
Yeah, and...
A Q cap, I think it is.
Is it a Q cap?
It's important to mention this.
Yeah, it's in Q cap, it's...
Chris, I know.
Well, no, it's more than just a fountain.
I know that.
Okay, do they know that?
There's a drain, well, they may not know. Go ahead and explain.
Yeah, well, this, the fountain needs work, we know that.
And maybe I worded it wrong with my title.
Some of the concrete around that fountain is hollow underneath it. We found that out in the fire truck, put their, one of their stabilizer hydraulic things in it, just shattered that sidewalk. But that, the way the parking lot drains, if you look on this side, it's got like a little hook with the drain that drains it under the wall. This side does not, and that's what's causing that sandstone wall to, to wash and, and push out and lean. It's not getting any better with time.
I think both of those walls.
So it's going to become a liability. We're going to have to have those unstacked in a drainage system some sort, put behind it and re, restack. But the, it's all like a ball of wax there, you know, so...
Yeah.
I don't want anybody to think we're spending that much of a fountain, because it's not quite that much.
I, I know.
I probably should have.
Well, no, it's...
Don't know how to word it differently.
Fountain slash retaining wall, I guess.
Yeah.
But getting back to the question I asked, I mean, the riverboat income, is that 64,000? Is that a pretty firm figure, or do you actually...
Actually, we are just going to receive 42,000.
Oh, really?
Yes, yes, yes. So that 64 is using money that we haven't used in years past.
Okay.
Okay? Because there's, sometimes there's line items that we don't use everything in.
Right.
Okay? Like the, the phone system, we don't use everything in that.
Okay.
It comes really close, but we don't...
In the election, we try to, you all probably remember that we try to, it costs about 20,000 for a city election. We always try to put a little bit back every four years, 5,000, you get 20, and then it's not like all at once boom, we planning.
I, I talked with Connie about that, and she explained, and again, I...
And the election could go...
For those of you that have, yeah.
Yeah, it could go more or less, if there's a primary, that's when you'll spend more than 20. If it's not, then 20, 21, I don't remember what it was.
I think it was 24 last time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I have a thought.
So?
And Connie, you would have to tell me if this is legal or not.
Okay.
Maybe I shouldn't. The thought I had was that we, we, actually, we budget like $36,000 for an animal shelter, and I'll, I'll come back and explain why I'm doing that, and that we contract them, contract with them for 12 months, but we pay out that 36,000 over a nine-month period of time. 4,000 a month times nine would be 36,000.
Okay.
And then we take another look at this whole thing in June or July, see how we're doing, see how they're doing, and if we wanted to do an additional appropriation next year to give them more money.
Well, or we could wait till May when we know what the circuit breaker, what's the word I'm looking for?
Circuit breaker loss.
Circuit breaker loss would be, we've done it with salaries before. We went back and filled it in and...
But this year, on budget this year, I worked my circuit breaker for, for 2024. I didn't have to change my circuit breaker loss by much because I'm able, I predict it pretty close.
There you go.
So...
Okay.
I don't use the number the state gives me.
Good to know. Well, I just thought I'd bring that up, there's options.
Yeah, but what Larry said is doable, as long as we have unappropriated money to be able to appropriate it, which in the past, and even this year, we have had, so...
And if we don't, they're, all the, they're just getting their money early.
And, you know, and I...
We're getting 36 than, than the, yeah.
I, I echo a lot, and I'm sure a lot of you do, what the animal shelter is doing for us all.
Yes.
And I will applaud Ann and Molly both of their efforts that they put in when they don't even hardly take much of a salary at times.
No.
And they love animals, and their heart's there, and I can't thank them enough for working on a shoestring budget, because that's what they're doing. And there's a reason a lot of people don't go into that work, because it's a lot of work, but they love them animals, and they love what they do, and we'd be lost without. But, you know, I do hope at some point in the future, the county can figure out a way to make this a little bit fundable, you know, either through, I know they've kicked around many ideas of some type of a dog or animal tax, or, or whatever. They need to explore those options if they haven't, and, but, because that will then help fund an animal control officer, and I would hope, but in the meantime, this is what we have to work with. And so, so council, what's your thoughts? You want to, Larry made like four or five different options there. You could go ahead and appropriate 36 and revisit it, and then do an additional at that time, or you could budget 50 and reduce some of these other things, you know, the fountain, Q cap, Connie was saying, you could maybe take some out of there. I don't know if edits an expenditure for it. I'm not saying it's not, if we, it's fine to take it out of it for me if it is.
I think...
Is it a professional, it's not really a professional service, so...
Well, I think edit would be, it, just talking out loud here, just thinking out loud, if we reduce the 50,000 in sidewalks, I think that could be made up out of edit funds.
That makes more sense.
Connie's...
I like that idea better. That works, because then it doesn't take any questionable if it is or isn't, it's just the shell game, I call it, move to one to move to the other.
If we wanted to do that.
Well, I do think it's important to fund it, so do we want to do the 36, or do you want to just go and do the 50 and do the sidewalk editing maybe as an option?
Reduce the 50,000 there by the...
Or it could be the, the fountain could even probably go with that, if you really, whatever.
Well, now, the fountain isn't in the general budget.
Oh, that's right, it's riverboat.
It's riverboat and Q cap, but then we would just put the difference in this other budget. We would still pay the 35 out of the general and then the other, and we'd just reduce it.
Here's the kicker, too. If the county doesn't give us an answer on that piece app, and they would say no, how much difference are we going to have to take out of general fund to cover what you asked for?
Well, that's, we'll get to that shortly. I've got some notes here from Connie and things we don't know.
Because if they say no, we have to make up the difference somewhere, somehow.
Right.
To fund that piece app.
And you, and is your budget figure zero in there, Connie? For dispatch?
We don't know.
Did you put zero in here for our contribution for dispatch in this budget?
No, I did the...
For what, general fund?
You've lost me, Chris. We've got a budget in here for...
Dispatch, but that's being funded. Is that us contributing anything to it, or is that them doing it all? That's what I'm asking. How much of our general fund is in this formula?
I did, the budget is nine, what is the budget? Hang on, I don't want to say some...
978,000.
978,000, and if I remember right, in miscellaneous revenue, I put, we'd get 850 from dispatch.
What's the difference in those two? I didn't think, the first number didn't register, so...
120.
About 128,000.
That, we're saying that we could, that maybe had to give towards it?
Right.
Okay.
If the nine seven, if, if, if the whole 978 was spent, which we know from years past, it's never all spent down to a zero.
Gotcha. So we did take out about 100,000.
Right.
That we integrated throughout this budget for general stuff, okay. Does that answer your question, Geraldson?
Oh, you've lost me. If they say no, we've got to come up with another 128,000 cut, or we've got to take a hundred?
We would have to, if they say no, we would have to come up with another, we would have to cut 100,000 out of this budget, roughly.
Out of the police budget?
No, general budget.
Not police.
Or somewhere in here, moving stuff around.
To cover the 128,000 that we may not get.
No, to cover the full 225 that we could have, that we've kind of paid ish in the past, like 212, I think.
Okay.
We used to pay around 200, we'll say 225 for fun, okay? And now we're only, Connie's only figuring in the budget 125. So we reduced it by 100, even though we're asking that they cover it all. If we have to cover it all, we've got to come back and cut 100 out of this to take it back up to the whole 225 that it was in the past.
That's what I want to know.
Sorry.
That's what...
I know you're not a mind reader, I didn't, I didn't present it that way.
It's very hard to...
No, but I mean...
Understand, I mean, to figure it.
Until they give us an answer, we can't finalize a budget.
I tell you one thing I would do, and I think we should consider budgeting just the full 50, as long as the county budget's the full 50. We shouldn't be willing to give more than them.
I'm talking about...
I'm on the animal shelter real quick.
I know, we just switched gears on that.
I'm back on her topic.
Because we don't know if they're going to give 50 or not, and that's a good point.
I mean, I don't...
I mean, we give them 35 this year, correct?
We, we, even if we do that, I think what they'll do is even if we give the 36 down and wait for the rest later, they'll just give 36.
I think you're right.
I, I believe they will. I mean, honestly, I mean, it's like the shell game, it's like Chris said, it's like the shell game there.
It's, it's a lot of that, and...
And I think the county has a lot of cuts to make.
They do.
Yeah.
They're, they're doing their best, I think.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
For this year, the, I wasn't on part of the negotiation of the thing, Larry, you're, the city's giving 35,000 to the animal shelter, correct?
Yes.
That's true.
So if we, if we bump it up 1,000 and pay it nine months, it's the same thing, and then we can revisit what Larry's saying come, whenever that comes due.
I like, I like that, actually. I like that.
Well, you can leave it at that for now, and then before, that'd give us a little time to finish going through this budget and see if there's any other cuts or additions we need to make, and then if we find out we, I don't say have any left over, because you never have any left over.
You never have any left over.
You may be able to revisit it and make that hole at the end of it.
So just give them 36,000 for next year and revisit it?
Well, how do we want to word that, Larry? You worded it better than I could, 36...
Can we do that nine-month thing, or is it state board or county's going to issue that?
And would the county agree to...
I don't see why not.
You're finance lady.
Yeah, I don't see why they would have a problem with that.
Okay.
If you budget it that much, and that's what we'll pay them, and it's for nine months, and then we'll revisit it, it'll be in the minutes what we're going to do, what you're going to do.
Well, we could put that in the interlocal agreement, because we'll come on with them, not the county.
Yes, correct, because we do sign the interlocal, yearly interlocal agreement with the animals.
With the shelter, not, we used to be with the county, but we changed that so we had a little more direct contact, I guess you'd say.
You okay with that, Larry?
Yeah.
Okay. We're not looking for motions on this stuff, we're just kind of, okay?
I, I think that is the way to go, but Larry's right.
Okay, so...
We don't know what they're going to do.
So what are we going to decrease, like $1,000 in order to do that?
Council budget? I'm kidding.
Mayor's budget.
Mayor's budget.
I don't know. I'd say decrease the sidewalk thing to 49. That's easy to grab, and then we'll figure it out later.
Okay.
All right? What page was that on? 53, 52?
14.
For the sidewalks?
No, it's a 50.
Oh, curbs and sidewalks is 14.
Oh, okay.
Page 14, I'm sorry.
And that was, so from 50 to 49?
Okay.
All right, I like it. We've accomplished...
Nobody has a pencil, do they?
I do.
Do you have a pencil? I'd like to make this...
Just what would you like out of it?
Well, I don't want to eat pen, I want a pencil.
You pass that to her.
I don't have a pencil.
I've got, it's coming in.
I forgot to grab one, and I just want to change that pencil.
All right, so we got animal shelter, we think, and I will send Molly an email, Larry, requesting income.
Yeah, I like, yeah.
And, you know, see what she says. I'm sure she'll be willing to provide it, or you can come up and look at it or something. I'm sure she'll make it available one way or another.
No, I'd like to have something that we can all see.
All right.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do we want to start back at page one, or do we want to start where we kind of left off around, did we leave off around the senior center last time, or Q cap?
Hey, let me look here. You left off at page 37, I think.
All right, so Q cap.
Q cap, which would be page 37, 38.
All right.
I can explain anything that you need explained in there, I think.
Do we have any questions on that? There is important for the employee handbook update. That's Connie, I spent on Connie, nice bucket list.
Well, actually, whatever we have left from this year will be carried over.
Okay.
It'll be a contract, because we've signed a contract.
We've been, we've been working on it, we just, it's...
Yeah, we've, we've got a little over 4,000 that I'll just carry over to next year then.
It is important to update that.
Under the, the mower for the cemetery, Alvy did request a new mower for next year with a trade-in, I think is what he said.
Yes, he did say trade-in.
And I did not work it in the general budget, I did work it back here in Q cap.
What's he have left today?
Not enough to buy a mower.
I don't know where that, this is what you give it, I don't know where it is.
It's on page 38.
No, on this, what we have right now.
21, what we have right now, well, we have money in there right now, but part of that is the, the street repair that the mayor was asking for, and the repair to the old Sexton Building out there, so...
This is current?
This is, well, as of July, yes, yes, so...
This is rule of thumb here, guys, when I was on that cemetery board, if we hadn't, if we make it through the summer and we don't go belly up and have to do this appropriation, money we have left, what I always did, I'd go, if it was Fisher's or Howes Garage or whoever, I'd say, I need a mower, and they'd give me a price. And if I had money left over, I would take that money and encumber it toward the price of the new one, and then pay for the rest of it starting January. Now, we may not have any money left, I don't know. But I've done that several times, that's how we bought equipment.
He, if we take out the repair to the old Sexton Building and that street repair to the, the road around the Sexton Building, I don't think we should keep that for him to be able to spend on anything besides those items. Then all he has is repair of equipment and maintenance, grounds maintenance, and he has a little over five thousand there.
Okay, so that'd cover?
That'll cover.
You'll be about seven thousand shy.
Yeah, but I don't know, I don't know what he's going to have in any of this others.
So, again, in this year's budget, you have money for the cemetery building?
Repair, some repair, we got seventy-five hundred in there.
Okay, and, and the road, how much money?
There was twenty-five thousand put in there for that, but I think we would prefer not to do the road until we know what's going to happen with the building.
I'm, what I'm going to try to do on that road, try. If I can somehow get that as part of our road inventory, then it will be eligible for community crossings funds, which would stretch the dollar a lot further. Now, if I can't, then, okay, but that's why I want to try.
Probably won't happen until next year.
It won't happen next year, no. Because community crossings won't be available again until January, the applications, I think, open up somewhere in there, and we'll know in April-ish.
So, for the new guy, so if we don't spend that money come December fifteenth, we can encumber that money over?
Unless, only if she has a.
You could, but I am really.
You have to have a project for it.
You have, yes, and I am really encouraging departments to try not to spend everything out of their budget this year, so we start out with a decent cash balance for next year.
That's great.
And every time.
But we don't spend it.
And every time I tell them that, then they come up with a problem.
I look at, if I look at.
They do!
Well, I'm saying if you don't spend that money, if we don't repair that building and fix that road, you've got thirty-two thousand dollars sitting there, where's it going to go?
Stay in the general fund, in our cash.
For next year?
For next year.
That's my question. Okay.
All right. So.
That building's a whole different.
Well, I, if I can have a moment, I would, not today, but, you know, obviously, get some numbers together, and then I can, I just ain't had. It's been a busy week. Next week's better, ish, well, today it's better, but it may be worse.
It's just Tuesday.
You never know.
It's just Tuesday. It's got a lot, it's a lot on the plate. All right, Q cap, what's your advice thoughts on that? They, they please, they have any suggestions? All right. Speak now, Reverend Keith. Moving on to the.
Let's take a look at it, I haven't looked at it yet.
Oh.
Go to page thirty-eight.
Well, this is, this is what's in there.
He's looking at the old.
This is what's in the budget today.
What's in there right now, correct?
This is what's proposed for next year.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, let me, that's, let's check this out. And see, did you increase it or decrease it?
Just up seventy thousand dollars. Overall.
How much?
Seventy grand.
Oh, Larry, I didn't hear you.
Seventy thousand.
More?
Yep.
Proposed for next year.
That includes the repair to the fountain and the concrete.
The fountain is seventy-five thousand, so it would basically increase to take care of the fountain.
And concrete wall and all that.
All that, yeah.
But the people watching our video are going to know that.
I, I know, I know, Chris.
That's why I keep saying, I'm about to freak out on that.
I know, we've got a drainage problem out there, which is, if we don't take care of, eventually those walls are going to end up on the sidewalk.
Those are my priority, honestly, the fountain's just.
I know, I understand.
Oh, I see it right here, I didn't see it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure. I'm going to try to fix the drainage issue or anything.
Spending too much money on it, so that's why it's good you're saying that.
Yeah. Yeah, I get you.
So is this a monthly or yearly payment? Or is that it?
We pay it. That is done, we would, we do not have that anymore, he's spending.
It's gone?
We've made all the payments on the, on the excavator for the cemetery, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is gone.
Overall, he's in pretty good shape as of today. Unless something goes wrong. Right? For Alvin?
Oh, yeah, yeah. He should be, you know, we just bought the new backhoe, or whatever they call those things.
Little mini excavator.
With the air, with the air and heat condition, you know, that was a, a mess getting that, showed up at that one or the other windows or something, I don't know.
Didn't have air in it, I think.
Okay.
All right, we good on that one?
I'm good on it, they are.
All right, well, we'll move on now to the page thirty-seven. Senior Center, court complex lease rental bonds.
That is set by our bond, our amortization schedule, the bond payment next year will be a hundred and twenty-two thousand. There's nothing you can change on that.
All right. Page thirty-nine. Moving on to page forty then, MVH. We'll see last year's and this year's in there.
And there is a slight, there is an increase in the overall budget, and that has to do with salaries. We moved some salaries around and things, and for this year, I've had to do some transferring to get them back in order and some additionals and things, so hopefully what's in there for next year will be the right amounts. Because like the street department employees are paid approximately six months out of the general budget and six months out of the MVH budget. And all the summer help that's hired by the street department is paid out of the MVH budget also.
So how much is that going to be at? Did you figure the numbers Larry?
Forty, forty-five thousand.
Yeah.
As mainly salaries are up forty-nine thousand, or labor.
Labor, yes, yeah, 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 so.
Okay. MVH makes motor vehicle highway, if you don't know that, might it?
And that's not a tax rate, that money comes from the state and it's on gasoline tax that we receive that money on.
Okay.
And that's, was figuring on a raise for the employees, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
If you want to turn to the next one, it's kind of related in some ways, local roads and streets, it's page forty-three and forty-four.
I did up that by five thousand, because I could see what money we had this year and what we had estimated to come in that we could, and that will give us more, we use this mostly for a match on community crossings.
So, and then the other part that we contribute probably comes from, I can't think of it.
MVH restricted.
And even a little edit.
Edit a little bit, and a little bit general too, sometimes.
MVH restricted, it's different than.
Whatever I can, I'll pull from many pots, whatever I can do to get that match, I have to go there and work on Connie a little bit.
You bet.
I didn't beg too much this year.
No, you didn't, I found it pretty easily this year.
Well, they've increased the, the amount you can get from a million out to million and a half. So, I mean, who wants to leave it laying on the table if you could, if you had the matching can do it? Won't get a better deal on paving in the future, I'm afraid. All right, EDC, that is page forty-five and forty-six.
And your, your increase on that budget was on salaries.
And that is.
And employee benefits.
Janice's salary is paid, part of hers is paid out of that.
How much is that at?
About three thousand.
Larry did a much better job, I didn't, I should have done that.
I have not went through it page by page, I know, I figured he did.
All right.
Good, and thank you Larry.
You're welcome.
All right.
EDC.
I, I accept contributions.
Okay, there's water over there, get all you can.
Except it's warm.
Well.
EDC's Economic Development Corp.
Corp, yeah, Tel City EDC.
Okay. My God, I thought it was what it was, but.
Um, all right, let's see, where do we leave off? Local law enforcement, page forty-eight.
That's down a little bit.
Yeah, it's down four thousand.
Well, we are, what is it, we're no longer doing? We're no longer doing fingerprinting at the dispatch, because that has been taken over by one of the local.
Companies.
Lab over here on Washington Street is now doing fingerprinting.
And I think that there were some restrictions that changed for the police to be able to do it, we had to, had to be in a different building or something.
Something, yeah, so, so our income will be a little bit less going into this budget, so that's why it is a little bit less.
Good and bad, because it did take a lot of our time, one of our employees to go in and do the fingerprinting and, you know, do the paperwork and scheduling, took time. Now that can be more devoted to. Red tape, all right.
Just out of curiosity then, when they arrest somebody, they have to take them to that lab to get them fingerprinted?
No, that's a.
I don't know if they have to get them fingerprinted.
They can fingerprint them for, people who break the law, I guess, trying to come up with a political corrector. They get fingerprinted out at the, the jail or the.
Detention center.
Detention center, but these are fingerprints for.
I got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Compromits.
Well, you don't have to get those.
You don't have to get those.
But school teacher, you want to be a substitute teacher.
Our nurses, I think, have to get them there and stuff.
We had people coming from all over this area to get them, Evansville, they came here to get them and stuff, because couldn't get in anywhere else, or didn't, so restricted. All right, we're done with local law enforcement, all right? We'll move down to page fifty, Riverboat, we kind of talked about this this briefly a while ago. The phone system's always the fun one. I don't like that number, and I know none of you probably do either, and that's, if you want something to figure out.
Please figure it out.
That's probably the most complicated thing I've ever tried to understand in my life, and I, I ain't got there yet. Maybe one day. We'll, we'll tackle that one, but it, it would take time. Let me turn back here, so, let's see here.
So that's down?
It's down, yes.
We're looking at the phone system, regional arts three thousand, Tulsi Strong three, historical three. Election expenses, we put ten in. Next year, we don't have any elections, just don't matter anyways, because we just want for city. So she's got it to sixty-four, and we're only getting forty-four. So she's using a little bit that we saved back for that work, and if that money's not necessary, it will just stay in that account.
Correct.
It's not like we're going to have to, we don't have to spend it.
Correct.
All right, everybody good with Riverboat? Tell you, I was on council, Riverboat was the one that everybody fought over, come on, fight over something. It really was, I don't know why that one was it. I guess because it was pretty flexible.
Well, we needed to get our state officials to give us more money.
You know, I have all of Tony Papano's paperwork on that, if anybody'd like to sit down and go through it and help, you know, legislate it and fight that, I would be honored to set up the table with them, and let's do it.
We would, yeah, we would have been okay if we'd have got that.
Well, unless they wanted to move it, like they're moving one of them. All right, the Lowet Police, page fifty-two. I'll give you a moment to look over that one. The Tasers Chief talked to you all about that at our last meeting, does everybody understand what we're doing with that? They actually have training, is it next week?
Nineteenth, nineteenth to twentieth.
Yeah, so it's going to, Phillips volunteered to be the, the Taseman. Brian wants to, he's going to fix that, what'd you say, lower back pain you had or something? He's going to get that, he's going to get that done, so we've got two volunteers.
Well, help, Gerald, go on.
A little shock.
You said there's, let me know how it comes out.
You go first, but you just kind of see where everything's going in that. That was the main thing.
Overall, that's down about twenty-five thousand.
I guess if you vote against the budget, you get Taseman.
Well, maybe the police part, but I don't know, but, all right.
How much?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Thousand. Well.
Is that the overall Lowet public safety budget, okay.
So, if you turn to page fifty-five, that's your Lowet S, School Resource Officers, what SRO stands for, Triton. And I will tell you, this is the council's not shocked when I do this one day, I want. I'd really like for us to look at funding another school resource officer full-time at the school. So, but right now Triton spends part of his time at the elementary and the other half the junior, senior high. I would love to see us do both schools. Currently, the school pays seventy-five percent and we pay twenty-five percent. If we were to do it, I did.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. We only pay twenty-five percent?
We get reimbursed back twice a year on this budget.
And that, that costs us ninety-five thousand dollars?
The, yes, I guess so.
No, currently it costs us, if everything was paid out this year, it's eighty-two thousand. And of that eighty-two, they pay seventy-five.
Oh, okay, okay, I, I thought, I thought you meant what we had budgeted was only twenty-five percent.
No.
No, we've got the full amount budgeted.
Correct.
But we get reimbursed.
We get reimbursed seventy-five percent of that.
Sorry, that scare you?
Yes.
Sorry, but I, I really, there's some grant opportunities out there that Chief and I've discussed. I think it would be important, and if we do this, I, it would probably be up to us to fund this one hundred percent, which would then kind of break it back down, you know, almost a fifty-fifty-ish type deal, but something I think's important for our school, to protect our kids. It's not getting any better across the country, it seems like.
You're talking about a hundred thousand dollars, right?
Who rotate, do they rotate?
We have one officer, that's, we could have some rotation, Phillips the only other one that's certified, our assistant chief, Triton is certified.
So when he takes vacation, Phillip goes out there?
He can, there's a, I think Chief said there's this provision where you can have other officers go out there for, to fill in when he's off or whatever. I don't remember what he, what word he used.
I think some of the reserves, he would fill in when he's off, but not for long periods of time.
Right, I forgot how long, he had explained it, but, again, it would, having two would help with that sum, because they'd spend half-days maybe, but it's just something that I really want us to focus on the next year or two. Give me twenty-five to plan for it and see what grants Chief had, you know, explored. It's important to protect our kids, our school. Fortunately, it's something we have to, we have to deal with, but I think we need to figure it out one way on that, so, that's not this year, although. Unless that grant comes about, we maybe ask for additional appropriations, but I, I'm not there yet. And I don't even know who we'd put in there, you got, you got to hire someone too. And we have a dog, he's back there although. What is a school resource dog yet? Anyways, any questions on the SRO part? We'll move to Lowet Fire then on page fifty-seven. That's probably the easier one. We are going to have at some point start looking at budgeting, saving some money, saving back our edit money. That's what we talked about a lot, what we do with it. We are going to have to buy another ladder truck at some point, not this year, or next year rather, but we do need to be considering that, and mindful, don't spend it all, pull a little bit back to some savings, so when it comes time to buy one or an opportunity at a great price, we've, we've got a little extra funds to put towards this, we're not scrambling.
If you look at, on page fifty-seven, part of apartment equipment, current's twelve thousand dollars, if I'm reading this correctly.
Yes.
And you go over to next year, and he's asking for twenty thousand.
Okay, you need to take the twelve thousand and you need to add that six thousand, six hundred.
The additional appropriation.
The additional appropriation that we did. That all had to do with last year at budget time, after budgets were approved, I had to make some cuts. And then when we come back the beginning of the year, instead of putting it back in the general budget, they had enough in Lowet Public Safety, so I put it in Public Safety.
So it was total would be fifteen thousand?
Fifteen, and now he is asking for twenty for next year.
So it's up five?
It's up five, yes, yes, and I, then there is nothing for equipment in the general budget for him. It's all being paid out of here.
Out of where?
Out of Lowet Public Safety.
Okay, I mean, I know.
It's actually only up two thousand, I think, but I wasn't sure it was right. Got twenty-two plus.
Twenty-two plus sixty-six.
Sixty-six is twenty-eight, six, and he's asking for thirty thousand.
Yeah.
It's up how much?
It's only up two, you're correct.
A little bit less than two thousand.
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that, I was, yeah.
All right, any more questions on the fire? Move on to Tel City Court, that's page fifty-nine. Not a whole lot on that one to talk about, but.
Well, this is up fifty grand. The proposed budget's up fifty grand.
Right.
Right?
Correct. Twenty thousand of that budget each year goes to the EDC budget. So that automatically come out of that hundred and thou, hundred thousand, and brought it down to the eighty thousand. And then, not knowing what's going to happen next year, we have, I just went ahead and put a hundred and fifty in there just to see if there was work needed to be done to the building down there, or.
Do you want me to explain some of the thoughts behind that?
Well, we've talked, I, I know what you want to do, and I think it should be.
Well, it's, we're talking about the, the port up by Swiss plywood, the old Maxon, does everybody know where a map, Boundary Way? There's the office building there, and then there's, I'm talking about on the dry side of the flood wall, so.
So who, we own the building dry side?
We own it all, yes, we own the dry side and the wet side. And we leased that.
To Furch.
To Furch, correct, and they paid us in advance for so many years that we used for the match for the pure project and all that. But on the dry side, you've got the office building, the windows are getting pretty bad, and that's a concern, but it's not a priority. The building's behind it, the large warehouse, they almost like two-story, pretty large. Everybody always said that those buildings had asbestos siding on them. And we did enter to contracts, you might remember, with Universal Designs to go through there and evaluate the structure, the needs, and what it needs. Everybody always said asbestos, and nobody knew, so we actually sent off and had it tested, it did come back asbestos. Everybody always said asbestos, and nobody knew, so we actually sent off and had it tested. It did come back asbestos. Okay, cause I wanted to know yes or no. I wasn't gonna take this someone's answer and have science behind it at least. They also found asbestos in some of the window glaze, the caulking, and some other areas that we really weren't quite sure about, so, okay, so we know how to handle that. We were initially gonna look and go about painting it and capsulating that asbestos. That's one way you can help it. Problem is, you paint the outside, excellent, it's still on the inside, because that's just a steel frame, maybe wood in some areas, building that side, like a pole barn would be. So it's still asbestos on the inside, exposing workers now into a confined space.
If you disturb it.
Well, shaking of a machine in that building could cause vibration, wouldn't it? And so I'm trying to figure out what our next step should be. I, I don't know, I don't have the answer. There's a lot of options, uh, just haven't had time to explore them further, so I will.
It's probably all that, the best is to probably on all that piping.
No, it's on the siding.
On the siding.
All that siding.
And the back's metal, isn't it?
Hmm, the warehouse, or, excuse me, the office building front's brick, but I'm talking about the big warehouse behind it, beside it. Mm-hmm, that's, yeah.
What needs, that needs to be cleaned up, and we've talked.
There are options.
We've talked for several years.
There are some options.
Because of what's going on in that neighborhood.
Well.
We need to get that property cleaned up.
Cleaned up and safe.
Yes.
Are, are my two priorities. Safe first, obviously. Um, I wanna make sure what kind of liabilities we have that's in the lease with, uh, Furch. That's, that, I mean, it all means something, and I'm gonna seek out, uh, some counsel on that with, that we use for the GE case, for what they recommend.
And just to let you know, the June thirtieth cash balance in this fund was three hundred and seventy-two thousand. So we don't bring in much money.
Right.
And then we do write out twenty thousand every year to EDC, so, and we don't even bring that much in.
I'm gonna look at grants.
And this all started before we did, so I'm not sure how this money ever was put in this fund. It would take some research.
I think it was tonnage from the port or something.
Port at that time, but now it's way down, so.
I think.
We'd have to check into that.
Right.
I think, but what I was gonna suggest, maybe, you know, I'm gonna look for some, some grants. Maybe that siding, it might be a better option to remove it and put a metal on it that it's entirely taken care of. Again, I'm, I'm gonna have to lead on some experience.
Yeah, that'd be a special contractor removing that one now.
But there's also that, on the wet side, that building further down, look, it's the same siding. Now, I didn't test it, but it's the same siding, so. Not getting any better. All right, I went too far into that, I'm sorry. I just wanted you all to be, I don't wanna keep going the dark on it, you know?
Well, I, I appreciate the update, because the last time we talked about it, we were talking about just painting it, but it's, it's beyond that.
Well, and maybe painting it on both sides, it will take care of it, but I wanna seek an environmental.
Yeah.
Opinion that, yes, that's the best thing, option to do overall.
But then our big issue is we don't have a lot of money either.
Well, that's where I'm gonna look at some, hopefully some, I don't know if a brownfield-type grant would cover that. I don't know what to even apply for until I know what I've got, so. All right, William Tell Complex, page sixty-one. You know, um, the income on that is doing pretty good, for the most part. It's taking care of the bills.
Yeah.
Putting a little bit back, so.
And a little bit.
Oh, yeah? It's not in the red, it's not in the red, right? So that's all, that's, that's the plus.
No.
It's very, um, rare that you see a community center such as that operate in, in the black, not in the red. Like Shergans operates in the black, it never, or in the red, it never goes, it never makes money. So having those, um, renting, you know, the German Americans and the other ones, whatever, your uncle.
Yeah.
Um, that helps offset our costs on that building, so it's not costing us funds to operate.
That space is used all the time.
It's where, every time I walk by, Phil.
It's good. So, any questions for the William Tell Complex?
Yeah.
All right. Tel City Depot. This one's just added, it's changed a little bit. Um, we have entered into a different lease agreement with the CVB earlier this year. They pay one flat fee, um, minus whatever they, you know, incur for their, uh, phones and their internet, but we pay for the electric, we pay for the water, we pay for the trash, we pay for the mowing, we pay for maintenance and what have yous. And we also run now the, um, community side of it that you could rent out for parties or whatever. It's done under, in the mayor's office there. Dody handles all that. CVB is still leasing it, and they pay a flat fee per month. We cover all the expenses. Other than that, they are only responsible for their room, their area, where they, they're cleaning. We don't go in there and clean for them. But on the flip side is, we now generate not only what they pay, they was only paying one fifty a month prior. But they had to pay for the utilities. They had to pay for a lot of things, so they've kind of changed things around. We also get the, not only that income, but we get the income from anybody leasing the event room. So we'll just have to see how that turns out at the end, how, it may break pretty close to even. Depends on how much it's leased.
Yeah.
And any, maybe, you know, if any major repairs come up, that may tip the scale.
That we have to pay now, so.
But, um, it may come out as a, not a washwash, but I don't think it should go too fast.
We own that building?
Yeah, we, we've, we've always owned it. We, we built that with, uh, recaptured funds from the NSP program that Tony Papano did, plus IH-CDA funds grant we got, was that, forgiveable loan?
I don't remember the IH-CDA funds.
NSP.
Well, NSP was, there was NSP, but there was another pot that went, Janice could tell you.
That was under Mayor's name.
Yeah.
Oh, that was like two thousand nine, two thousand ten, around then.
Two thousand eleven, or I think is when it was dedicated, or something like that. I don't remember. There's a plaque on there.
Yeah.
I know this doesn't apply to the budget, but have they hired a new director yet?
Uh, to CVB? No, they have not. They have been doing interviews. Um, we have a, the CVB does have their meeting on Thursday. So I'm sure that'd be discussed.
So is the county in charge of that?
In a way.
The mayor remembers.
Yeah. In a way. Um, not to get off topic for our budget, but I'll try to sum this up. The county commissioners have six appointments to the commission. And then as mayor, I have five appointments to the commission, and that's, um, set up through an ordinance that was adopted, and there's some state statute that kind of says to ratio each entity appoints or has the appointing numbers or powers. So, and then that commission group contracts with a non-for-profit entity, Perry County Convention and Visitors Bureau, to carry out tourism services. So there's two entities there. One is more a governmental entity that contracts with a nonprofit to carry out the duties that that entity would be responsible for. But. It's complicated in some ways, but it takes a minute to understand it. I wish that was the way I could write it down.
Is that facility open at all now?
It is open the best that the, the CVB board members have been going down our, on, some of us, there was one they hired temporary to do some, you know, help transition, some of the important things that were going on, but. We do have part-time help we're hiring that goes down and keeps it open when they can, and there's been board members volunteer their time to go down there and keep the, uh, tourism office open during those times, so. We are, we'll find out Thursday what, what the status is of the interviews and how they went, and if there's any recommendations for that position, so. All right, all right, uh, Q cap, Q capital improvements. That's page, um, sixty-five. That's our smokers, ain't it? Is that the smokers?
Yes, it is. This money is collected from cigarette tax. It is sent directly from the state to the city. And I was able, I don't think the money's actually going up, but I had extra money sitting in the fund a little bit, so I did up that to sixteen thousand.
Up a little bit.
Just a little bit.
All those, no smoking campaigns are helping. It's decreasing our money, but I'm, I'm glad to see it decrease in some ways, cause I, you know, healthier. All right, um, edit, page sixty-seven. I, uh, I didn't bring it with me. Do you all have a copy of our three-year edit plan that was filed in January? But you do, you, 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 you're aware of it and have seen it, okay.
I'd see it over there, that stacker is in here.
Okay, well, I didn't bring one with me, I'm sorry. Todd would have went over it with you, but we, we do have one, and it is on file at the, um, you're required, well, you're not, I said required, but.
Yeah, it still says draft on it, but this is.
To submit that every three years, and we do have that on file, so.
Yeah.
That's kind of it in a nutshell. It is gonna increase some, uh, from eight-eight-eight last year to about nine thirteen, I guess? Somewhere in there, Connie?
No, it was nine twenty-three this year.
And where'd you get that at?
Well, eight-eight-eight was, oh.
That was the amount of money we got.
Yes, but there was more that came in there because of the, um.
The supplemental and that. The budget was nine twen, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, and next year it's nine hundred and thirteen thousand. I did move a little bit around and did put in here for, uh, the second street department truck that had been asked for, for the street superintendent. Uh, he asked for two new trucks at forty thousand. Uh, I did put the forty thousand in this budget. And in the Lord of Works budget, I just put twenty-five in there, hoping that maybe he can find.